How are you doing, Jean?
Doing good.
Yeah, I'm ready when you want. Okay, ready?
Yes.
Good evening. This is October 28, 2014. It is 7:30 on the dot. This is the Oaklawn Board of Trustees' regular meeting, meeting number 2014-29. Clerk Quinlan, please take the role.
President Berry?
Here.
Trustee Vorder?
Here.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Elanichak?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Here.
And Trustee Carberry?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, uh, number three on our agenda is public comments. We do have, uh, two commenters today. Dan Johnson first regarding Veterans Day. Hi, could you state your name and if you're an Oaklawn resident?
Dan Johnson, Oaklawn resident, eleven years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll be brief. Uh, I first wanted to talk about, um, the board, um, gave some land to a Boy Scout, Justin Aubin, a couple months back, to build a flagpole over across from the VFW. The flag-raising ceremony will be November 9 at 10:30 a.m. If you guys would like to come out and see the, the flag-raising ceremony. If you haven't been over there, the bricks are all done. Got a few touch-ups to do, but, uh, the Boy Scouts and the VFW worked together and did a great job. So I'd like to just, um, Trustee Carberry, if you could just take one and pass it. That's for the trustees, so you guys have your official invite. Sorry they're in black and white. We, uh, we budget over at the VFW, so.[145.16][145.16](laughter) Uh, then, uh, my second item is, uh, November 11th is Veterans Day. We will head to our normal ceremony, um, over at the memorial in the village by, uh, where Fall on the Green takes place. Uh, promptly it'll start at 11 o'clock. We have, um, one of the others, one of the schools that's gonna work with us and do the choir again, and then we'll have refreshments back at the VFW on 95th and 52nd Avenue. For those of you that think it might be too cold, I'm gonna have at least three 90-year-olds out there holding flags and holding rifles, so there's no excuse. On that note as well, our WWII vets, Korean vets, and for that matter, our Vietnam vets are getting older. They don't have a whole lot of Veterans Days left, so please come out and show the veterans your support. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dan.[199.12][199.12](applause) And Dan, before you go, I just wanna confirm our middle school will also be there. Uh, Oaklawn Hometown Middle School choirs are gonna be singing also. Right? Okay.
Um, Mayor.
Yes.
And Dan, I'm a Vietnam veteran. I got a lot of 'em left.[215.73][215.73](laughter)
Thank you.
I wasn't talking about you.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Our next public commenter is Iris Cotto, um, regarding property in Oaklawn that looks like a junkyard. Hi, if you could come to the podium, welcome, and we ask that you please state your name and if you're an Oaklawn resident.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Iris Cotto. That's I-R-I-S. Cotto, C-O-T-T-O. I live in, uh, 49th Avenue and 96th Street, and I'm a resident for over ten years. And the reason I'm here, I'm sure you all know the board, is from an email that I sent you about a month ago about the property next door to me. I know that the house was on fire. I know that things happened. But the yard is a junkyard. In the email, I send you pictures. I don't think I'm a pest because I call maybe once a month, and I think I didn't communicate with you guys maybe for over a month. I asked all of you, because this is everybody's responsibility, to go and visit that property. I don't know if you did or not. Mayor, you sent me an email, you will. I don't know if you did or not.
Yeah.
But if you did, then you have to understand that I'm in a very tight position here, that I need to sell my house, and if somebody doesn't wanna buy my house because they don't like my house, so be it. But when someone doesn't wanna buy my house because of the property next door, and you know, you're all aware of it, then we have problems. I'm in the situation right now that I cannot even put my house for rent, 'cause nobody wants to rent my house. They ask me questions, "How about the yard next door?" They don't ask about the house. The house, well, it will be fixed when it will be fixed. They, everybody asks about the yard. I have mice in my house already. I shouldn't even say, be saying this in front of everyone, because now you know nobody's gonna buy my house. And I have seen mice on the street. I have raccoons. I have droppings in my yard. I have a dog. If my dog poops all over my yard, and I don't pick it up for weeks, and my neighbors complain, you guys are gonna make me clean it. I do not understand why you cannot clean this yard. Everything is in the elements. Everything is out in the elements. I don't know how else to explain it. You have to go and see it to believe it, 'cause there is no way to explain this. Even pictures, I don't know, the picture looks wacko. You don't know if you should turn it one way or another. This is bad, and I'm asking to please, for the last time, because I'm not gonna email you anymore, to fix this house, the yard, just the yard. I'm not asking about the house. You have ordinance, you have code of enforcement. I ask you for that fence to get down, because the fence is attached to a hurt link fence with, um, and the big fence is attached with zip tie, and I've sent you pictures of that for years. And part of the fence is attached to my fence. I should not tell my neighbor, "Cut that zip tag out of my yard, out of my fence." This is your job. You have to enforce the ordinance. You cannot put me in a predicament to be arguing with my neighbors about something that you already know. You made these rules. You fine people, you, you make us come over here.
Thank you.
Or, or pay something, please. This is beyond, you, you making a mockery out of me. If you're not gonna fix it, just let me know.
Thank you. Um, we have three minutes for public comments. Uh, Leary, is there anything you wanna say about this home or anything that we've been doing?
Be more unhappy, Mayor, and we have, we have spoken.
Thank you.
Um, I personally, um, met with the Indiana Dumpster Company, had them-
And I'm talking about the dumpster, the yard, sir, the yard.
If you could, please let him talk. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mayor, ma'am. As I indicated to you, I had that conversation onsite with that company, and I directed our building official and our property maintenance official to work on that. I won't get into the details relative to the owners', um, difficulties of which you touched on with the unfortunate fire, but I can assure you that both Jeanie and Don are aware and are working as fast as they can to have that property repaired, um, for the fire damage within code and to have that lot cleaned up. And they're on top of it.
And in the meantime, sir, what am I supposed to do? Leave with that disgust next to me? There is a, there is a lot of-
Yeah, this is it.
No, this is very important. There is a-
No, excuse me, ma'am.
Things of, uh, what, detergent, detergent, and it smells. I supposed to smell that now, because the Department of Health did not contact me?
Our public comment is not a give-and-take. Larry will get in touch with you, and I, I thank you sincerely for coming to talk to us today.
Thank you. I don't wanna be rude. I really have to go, so it's not because I'm upset, even though I am. But excuse me, I need to go, and I expect this to be resolved very soon.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. And that's the last of the public comments this evening. Item four on the agenda is conflict of interest disclosure. Does any, uh, board member have any conflict to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna move on to item five. This is approval of the meeting minutes of the regular meeting minutes, 2014-28, dated October 14, 2014. May I have a motion, please, on item five?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Properly moved by Trustee Vorder, seconded by Trustee Carberry. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Elanichak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
And Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item six on, uh, the agenda is Elevator Escalator Safety Week, Safety Awareness Week, November 9 through the 15th. And this is a proclamation I'm gonna read. "Whereas the week of November 9th to the 15th, 2014, has been declared Elevator Escalator Safety Awareness Week, and whereas the purpose of this week is to increase public awareness of the safe and proper use of elevators, escalators, and moving walkways, and whereas the elevator industry greatly contributes to the quality of life, and whereas this endeavor is worthy of support and cooperation to benefit the citizens, the general public, and the short-range vertical transportation. Now therefore, I, Dr. Sandra Berry, the village, President of the Village of Oaklawn, along with the Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim November 9th through the 15th as Elevator Escalator Safety Awareness Week, and I hereby urge all citizens in the Village of Oaklawn to participate fully in this observance to improve our quality of life." Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have, uh, let's see. Item seven on the agenda, I, I think we are gonna pull this. Is that correct, Larry?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I need a motion? No, thank you. Um, we, I have item eight, new business by village trustees. I'm gonna start again in District 6, Mike. How's it going?
Thank you, Mayor. It's going well. We've had, um, I just wanted to thank the, um, without getting specific, but our Oaklawn police have done a, um, a wonderful job, and I received, um, three phone calls from, uh, from residents that have showed their, um, just the way they handled the situation, you know, a couple minor thefts and, and a couple other things a little more, a little more serious that they, they followed up, and they really, um, they made it, uh, made the people feel well, so I wanna thank our policemen for that. That's all I got.
Okay. And District 5, Carol.
Uh, actually, just a couple things. Um, when I, I did not see this, but it, um, it had been brought to my attention, um, that the mayor, that you had a interview with Congressman Lipinski on Channel 4, and it was broadcasted, um, and the person that, the candidate, you know, who is running against him, uh, you know, Sharon Branigan, apparently has requested several times, uh, to also have that opportunity.
I have not received a request from her, Carol.
She has apparently made it known, and I think she's talking to attorneys.
You could check our server. There's nothing from her. I have not received a phone call or email from the candidate.
I, and so, this is my point. I don't think it's legal to do that. That Channel 4 is a government channel.
Right.
And that you can't use this whether, you know, for any political agenda whatsoever.
Correct. And there was no political content.
And then you can't just, and you cannot just, and again, I didn't hear it, but you cannot just interview one person without giving the opportunity to everybody else. I think you're setting us up for a lawsuit. Um, I've heard chatter that she has contacted an attorney, and, you know, Pat, you wanna weigh in on this?
Sure, I can. I, I think you're referring to the, I think it's the equal-time rule.
Yes.
I think it's a federal FCC type of rule. Uh, there are exceptions to that rule. One of the exceptions is for legitimate news sources. Um, I haven't seen the interview. Obviously, elected officials are often interviewed as part of a legitimate news source, so that is an exception, um, as far as what the laws.
Well, I, honestly, in my opinion, the timing of it is, you know, obviously, people are out there voting right now, and you're putting him in front of cameras, you know, thing.
He is our congressman, Carol.
And whether I agree or disagree with, you know, I'm not talking, this is not about political, I'm just saying, moving forward, I do think that you should reach out. I'm asking you to reach out.
Well, it was not political in nature, so I don't feel there was a need to do that. And if you could tell me what about that interview was political? And if you could share with the candidate that perhaps a congressional candidate would communicate by contacting the person directly.
I will do that.
I, I do not read the things she's posting on. I've heard a few sources tell me, but she has not contacted me once.
Well, I-
And I, I find that highly questionable myself and political, frankly.
What's political?
For her to put it out there everywhere without contacting me.
Okay.
So-
According to her, she has.
Well-
And so, my, my biggest fear was that we were setting ourselves up for a lawsuit.
Yeah.
And that I know that in the past, there had been discussion prior to this new board coming on, that, hey, you know, we could interview all the different candidates, people running, so people are informed when they're going to vote. That's, you know, an appropriate way to handle this, not, you know, pretty much parade somebody in, in front of the cameras.
Well-
Um, that's the impression.
Pat, do you, Pat, do you feel this is putting us at risk for a lawsuit?
As long as it's a legitimate news interview, and I haven't seen the interview, um, but as long as it's a legitimate news interview, those are clearly accepted from the equal-time rule.
And it, and like-
And I'd be, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about it. I've been contacted by Ms. Branigan or-
I also received a letter from a resident who specifically brought that to my attention as well, and, um, that she was upset with it, in fact, felt that, you know, the Village of Oaklawn, and in particular, the mayor's office, should not be doing this. Um, now, she also had brought up, and I talked to her when she sent the letter, but she was insistent on bringing this up too. She felt that a robocall's, again, saying that you're from the mayor's office, you know, promoting a, a local candidate from District 5, you know, a meet and greet.
You're saying there's a robocall?
Again, I told her, it, this is, I'm just telling you what she told me.
I have never done a robocall. I am not, I am not even taking an opinion on the congressional race, Carol.
She was, I, I, I'm-
Carol, I know who made that robocall. It was not the mayor.
Was the mayor's office referred to in it, in any?
No.
The mayor at any?
No.
Well, like I said, I didn't hear it, and she was-
Well, maybe check your sources a little more carefully before you make accusations at a board, Carol.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Carberry.
It's just a suggestion. I understand your, your concerns are, I'm sure you're just concerned about Oaklawn.
If we're gonna be sued, be-
Yeah, I just wanna finish.
From somebody, yeah.
Let me just finish my point. So if you're concerned, when you find out about it, I'd take that right, those concerns. Did you contact the lawyers at all? O'Grady or anybody? Pat? Just now?
That's what I'm doing, right. Now, well, I've-
Give them some time to prepare, or maybe let them give you an answer, you know?
Well, the last time I brought this up, uh, with the mayor's blog, again, you know, using the village's address and phone number, that's using the mayor's office for political purposes. It's, it's not right.
I'm just trying to talk, you know, we're talking about that.
No, I understand that, but it all ties in. Pat disagreed with me. Had, I had asked for an opinion on it, and I never got a formal legal opinion on it, but this kinda, I'm seeing a pattern. I don't like it. I think you're setting the village up.
Carol, residents want to get to know our elected officials, people who affect their lives. Channel 4, frankly, our board meetings, I think everyone would agree, do not represent the very best of Oaklawn, unfortunately, and there's a lot of wonderful things going on out there, and I intend to get Channel 4 populated with a lot of different things. And I think-
Timing is everything, though.
You know, Carol-
You don't do it just before an election.
I, I, I understand your point, and please relate to Ms. Branigan, that I'm still waiting to hear from her. She'd like to discuss it.
I will.
Thank you.
And that concludes-
Thank you, Carol. And how's District 4?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just, um, I just wanna report a little bit on my October 16th, a week ago Thursday, meeting on the traffic light in the district, 95th and Kilborn. We held the meeting right here. The room was full. Uh, many, many, uh, people asked intelligent questions. We had representatives of the hospital here making that presentation. Some of those suggestions will be incorporated into the design. We also talked to residents from Kilborn, Kenton, about the, uh, pork chop that we're going to put into the streets there, which will limit left turns. The meeting was very well-receptive. People were very happy about the design and an opportunity to have input into the meeting. We also, at the end of that meeting, had an opportunity to discuss the success of 111th and Cicero, uh, and we clarified, uh, some of the misconceptions have been out there in the public about the profit and loss statements of that piece of property. Again, uh, the feedback that I received from all those residents, maybe 60-plus, uh, was very, very positive on the development. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And how's life in District 3, Trustee Strite?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Before I begin my report, I feel the need to ask my fellow board members to allow me to complete my report, my third district report, without interruption. I will be presenting hard, incontrovertible facts. These facts will be unpleasant and no doubt cast an unappealing light on the village and its leaders. I will offer a media packet to any interested party after the meeting concludes. Uh, this media packet will contain the evidence my office has gathered while researching these issues. And my report this evening is about two things, about public safety and transparency. These issues have come to light because of this administration's callous disregard for both. The safety and well-being of our residents should always be the primary concern of our village government and its elected officials and employees. It appalled me to discover, to discover, that this administration has clearly demonstrated their contempt for the safety of our residents, putting their health and well-being at risk. By now, I'm sure everyone is familiar with my position on the outsourcing of the Oaklawn Emergency Communication Center. It has always been my belief that the decision to slash our experienced staff of dispatchers in favor of privatized service was shortsighted and dangerous. I have with me tonight evidence, page after page of evidence, showing just how dangerous our dispatch service has become. Months ago, I requested that the village turn over documentation detailing problems with the dispatch service provided by NORCOM. The village, and by this I mean the mayor and the manager, denied, deflected, and generally ignored official requests for information. They have gone so far as to repeatedly suggest that I was lying, that I was fabricating problems where none existed, and I have numerous detail, numerous emails with the mayor to document that. I was forced to ask the Attorney General's Office to intervene in the matter. The Attorney General's Office opened an inquiry into the matter. That's what it took to finally get this administration to turn over documents that are public. These documents show a history of dispatch problems. I received a list of 46 complaints just from Oaklawn's Fire Department since February. I also have documents from other communities served by this dispatch center with multiple complaints, and these are only the tip of the iceberg. These are only the complaints made by police, fire, and emergency services. I have yet to receive documentation about complaints by residents. To further demonstrate this administration's disregard for public safety, I point you to the construction at 95th and Mansfield. The building that is being built today is being built so close to the street that it presents a dangerous traffic problem. Drivers cannot see oncoming traffic at a safe distance. According to the plans that this board approved, and according to actual field measurements taken at the site, drivers can only see less than half the safe distance that the Federal Highway Administration and the Illinois Department of Transportation require. This administration has attempted to excuse this dangerous building by saying that it's actually slightly further back from the street than the previous building. It's like saying that a bullet to the heart is fine, because it's not a bullet to the head. The building is dangerous, and you approved it, and you choose, even now, to do nothing about it. You approved it without the neighborhood's representative being present, and I thank Trustee Quinlan for pointing that out this, that evening and asking the board to delay passage of that ordinance. You approved it because the petition, because of the petitioner's personal ties to the village manager, which were not disclosed to this board. How very transparent of you. When this administration started campaigning two years ago, transparency was a word that was used to sway the voters. Since that time, transparency in this village has continued to diminish. The requirements of FOIA are so abundantly clear that the Village of Oaklawn's failure to comply with the requirements can only be seen as willful and intentional violations of FOIA and acts of bad faith. This administration needs to understand that the information does not belong to them. Government records are people's records, and transparency laws exist for a reason. The village, like all public agencies, must follow state law. It can't pick and choose what information to release to taxpayers. Any resident or official who requests information should not be forced to, to seek assistance from the Attorney General. It's unclear how often this has happened to others, but it needs to stop now. If all requested information were made easily, readily available to the public, true transparency could be achieved. I believe it is time that ordinances be put in place to mandate transparency in this village. Therefore, I am requesting that three ordinances be placed on the next agenda of the Board of Trustees' meeting. The first ordinance is an ordinance directing the village manager to make available all FOIA requests on the village website within five business days. This will inform all taxpayers about what information their neighbors find important enough to request from the village. The second ordinance is an ordinance directing the village manager to make all FOIA responses available within five business days. Like the first proposed ordinance, this will provide completed information of not only requests, but responses, which we never see today. This will inform all taxpayers about any run-arounds and denials of information. My goal is to eliminate these denials and run-arounds that have become commonplace here. The final ordinance is an ordinance directing the village manager to include any FOIA responses in the regular packet sent to trustees. This will allow all trustees to be fully informed of the information that is being disseminated by the village and all issues that are being researched. As representatives of our districts, staying informed is, is our obligation. I believe residents want a government that's more open and honest, a government that makes real transparency the cornerstone of its agenda. When it comes to the quality of life issues like crime and public safety, taxes, and ending politics as usual, and creating a more transparent and open government, the people of Oaklawn deserve nothing less. I have one other issue of new business, Mayor. At the last board meeting, I requested a legal opinion regarding the village manager entering into service contracts. Our village manager routinely enters into service contracts without bringing those contracts before this board. Tonight's board agenda includes a report and another example of a contract that was another no-bid deal and never came before this board. Two weeks ago, I asked for a legal opinion on whether or not the village manager has the authority to enter into service contracts without board approval. And Pat, I know it's only been two weeks since I requested that opinion. You did say that you would provide one. Have you had a chance to prepare an opinion, and would you like to share your preliminary findings with this board?
You'll have the opinion by the end of the week, Trustee Strite.
Thank you.
Is that it, Bob?
It could be.
Okay. Very good. Uh, Pat, do you wanna address any of his discussion of FOIA?
Uh, sure. I, I can talk generally about FOIA.
How many FOIA officers do we have?
I don't know the exact, I would refer to Jane, uh, or-
Nine.
For that question. I'll just talk about generally our FOIA process, or when we're brought involved. We treat every FOIA the same exact way, regardless of the requister. There are various departments in the village. Uh, when information is requested, sometimes some of the FOIA needs, uh, information from the Building Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, et cetera. Those records are requested from those departments. Uh, when the records, when we're asked, as the law, as the village attorney, to review those records, uh, again, regardless of who requests them, we look at them to make, to see if there are any valid exemptions under FOIA. And FOIA is, is very clear on what the exceptions are, when they apply, and when they don't. Uh, I know- I know for this FOIA that Trustee Strite is referring to, the documents, and I will make another statement, the mayor is not involved in the FOIA process. We work closely with the Clerk's Office and all the other departments. When we receive the documents responsive to your FOIA, Trustee Strite, we turn them over to you immediately.
And regarding your FOIA, Trustee Strite, when the FOIA requests come in, the different departments' FOIA officers receive them, and then, you know, they take and collate all that information and return it to you. I would be concerned, as you are, if there was information returned from those individuals that was not released. That would be a true issue. In this case, however, the FOIA officer said, "We do not have information regarding this FOIA request," and this is from the very department where they later showed up. This is not the fault of our FOIA officers who compile all the data. If there's an internal issue, it's a separate issue, and it's completely reckless, irresponsible for you to treat this as a malicious thing. When the error was discovered, you drafted a letter. The very next business morning, the documents were released. No one here has any desire, any desire. But when someone says, "We don't have information," we tend to believe them, sir. And, you know, I find it interesting that you say you knew about information so much because we didn't have it. And if you have it, consider sharing it. I'm going to move on to District...
Can I just come up?
Sure.
Trustee Strite, you did refer to the Attorney General's Office. I have to tell you, and I've said this from day one, we like Lisa Madigan's office because they are helping us be transparent here. When you say request for review, Carmy's one of our great FOIA officers here, we get so many of these, let them tell us, okay, can we do this, can we not do this? The main objective is to always protect the Village of Oaklawn and our residents. And we work very closely with Pat, and frankly, Larry and Sandy do not have much to do with the FOIAs. It's the nine FOIA officers, department heads, and we do our best. So we like the Attorney General an awful lot, and they help us on a daily basis, so I'm being honest about it.
Thank you. Trustee Olenichuk?
Could I respond, Mayor, please?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, Mayor, what you're saying, I'll make it brief. So what you're saying, then, is in the most controversial decision that this board has made in years about outsourcing 911, when you were sending me those emails demanding to know the names and dates and examples of what had happened, you're truly, you're going to tell me with a straight face that you had no idea that there were problems in our 911 center because we've had a director resign? There are so many problems here right now that this, I've said it, you have put the residents of our town...
Trustee Strite, are you going to say anything new? Otherwise, we're moving on to District Two.
So you had no idea that these problems existed? That's what you've said?
Trustee Strite, when we get a letter saying we don't have information, I'm not going to question our FOIA officers.
So you didn't look at the letters from Bridgeview, the letters from Burbank, the letters from Evergreen Park? You're saying you didn't know those existed? Because I got a stack of those here too, Mayor.
Well, you could share them with me.
I'm going to.
Because I've asked you at least several times, you know, at least six probably.
I'm shocked. I'm shocked that you're actually willing to sit up here and say you were unaware of these problems that have plagued our community.
Well, I wouldn't ask you if I knew.
All right.
So, you know, but I would also share with the press the documents that show we have no documents, so, you know, go figure. Alex, District Two.
Thank you. Just a little confused.
Beautiful District Two.
Beautiful fall days. A little bit confused. Trustee Strite, you said you need an ordinance to get the FOIAs on a weekly basis in the trustee packets? Is that what you're asking for?
No, that's not what I said.
I didn't read your speech, so could you just reread it for me?
Sure. I'd be happy to. What I said is I would like FOIA requests posted on the website within five days. I'd like FOIA responses posted on the website. By the way, we do get the, the trustees get the request. We get those in our trustee information letter every week. The only thing we don't get is the responses to the FOIA, the important information. Okay, so I'm asking that that be, let's put it online so that when a resident submits a FOIA request, that the neighbors, everybody, we know what they're asking about, what they should be concerned about. If we're going to talk about transparency, let's actually make it more than just a campaign slogan. Let's put it on the website, and let's put all these FOIA requests and responses, provide those to the trustees, too. That's what I said. Put those in the packet within five days.
I'm very glad that you recognize campaign slogans. This is a very good opportunity for you in your next election to campaign in front of the cameras. I'm just very concerned that we here at this board are here to do the business of the village, and I really question what you're trying to accomplish. I do want to update the citizens on the senior snow shoveling program. We've had quite a good response. We still have seniors in need, and for those of you who are looking to volunteer, whether you'd like to do one house, once a month, once every two months, we have a lot of need of seniors in this village that need somebody to volunteer to help them out during this winter. And I hope this winter isn't like last winter, but it looks like it's going to be another very cold and snowy winter. But the senior snow shoveling program is totally, works with volunteers. We're looking for anybody who is willing to apply. We try to keep the volunteers within their neighborhood. We've had volunteers, I know that the former police chief has volunteered, I know Larry's volunteered, I know many people at this board have volunteered, as long as kids, as well as kids in the neighborhood. Basically, we try to pair up seniors who are right now registering. They have to the end of the month to finish the registering process. Then we pair up seniors with people who are volunteers in our neighborhoods. We try to keep the kids and the adults as close as we possibly can and try to make this program work as well as we can. I know it's difficult sometimes with the kids being involved in school and activities, so that's why we make a commitment that if we do have a young student that wants to volunteer, their homework and other athletics come first, and we tell the senior that we will get the snow from when it stops falling twenty-four hours from that time. And we've been fairly successful, although some of these snows have been pretty heavy. So if you're interested, you can go to the website. You can either volunteer on the website for being a student or an adult, and if you're a senior that has a need, and we do ask seniors for needs, that people do have needs, to go to the website and look at that. And if you only want to do it for a month, that would be great. We do cover the months of December, January, February, and it's gone into a little bit into March. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And how's life in District One, Trustee Desmond?
District One is good. Life is good there. Getting a new park, completely renovated at Workbrook, Splash Park. I believe they're going to redo the hockey fields and the skate park. Just a couple of comments on what was spoken about earlier. Contrary to what Trustee Strite would like us to believe, the 911 center has not been outsourced. It's still right here where it has been for, you know, the last twenty, twenty-five years. He says there's a history of complaints. I mean, how far back, you know, is he going with his complaints? Is he going back just when he decided that it was politically beneficial for him to change his position on the first responders? And despite, you know, several efforts to conjure up these complaints, we still have no complaints from residents. So that's all I have from the first district.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we have item nine on our agenda, our village manager's report. We need our village manager for that.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, and I'll keep my remarks brief. I just have a thanks. I'd like to thank each and every one of you in the front row and the second row. The village, like many municipalities, and these are difficult times, has faced some tough issues. But you've all done your job as professionals, whether it's Oaklawn Independent News, whether it's The South Town, whether it's The Reporter, all of you, I thank you. You've always contacted the village. You've done the very best in reporting and giving information to our public as professionals. Not an easy job. There's always two sides, at least, to an issue. So I'd like to thank all of you, and you always know that you can contact anybody up here on the board if you have questions. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Item ten on our agenda tonight is Ordinance 142968. This is an ordinance authorizing an addendum to the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System Agreement. May I have a motion on item ten, please?
Motion made, Mayor.
Properly moved by Trustee Vorder.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Carberry. Any discussion? Let's call the vote, please. Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichuk?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we're on item eleven now. That's Ordinance 142969. This is an ordinance of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, approving and authorizing the execution of a ground lease agreement for the property commonly known as 10900 South Cicero Avenue between the Village of Oaklawn and Stony Creek North LLC. May I have a motion on item eleven, please?
Motion approved.
Properly moved by Trustee Carberry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Vorder. Any discussion here?
Mayor, if I could, just to...
Oh, yes, Larry.
...brief remarks, and if I could, our special counsel, Matt, is here at the podium, and if I could trouble Todd and Paul from Hamilton Partners to come forward as well so that if there's any members of the board who have questions, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to answer them. I'm going to go through this real brief. You've seen this before, but for the members of the audience who are new to this issue, I'm extremely pleased to bring before you tonight a continuation of everyone's efforts on this board in the community, particularly our planning commission that's done an outstanding job at the intersection of 111th and Cicero, known as Stony Creek Promenade Phase One, Phase Two, and this is Stony Creek Promenade North. Used to be a funeral home, and as I shared with the board, this funeral home at the top was constructed circa 1969. It was constructed for the sole purpose of a funeral home. Edgar family historically served a good part of the Swedish community in the greater Chicago area, Norwegian, Scandinavian population, and followed their constituent to the south and the west as many other businesses did historically in the greater Chicago area. This property languished and was virtually a vacant building, and under tax laws in the state of Illinois, you do not get a significant amount of property tax revenue from a funeral home, nor do you generate property taxes. As we've all heard in this latest gubernatorial campaign, personal services are not taxed. In 2009, the former mayor and board and administration boldly sought to secure this property before it fell in the hands of other uses that were not compatible with the larger vision and plan for Stony Creek. Without going into detail, the building had other proposed uses, and it was our feeling that, long run, we could secure more value. An environmental site assessment was commissioned, paid for by the owner of the property. An appraisal was undertaken, and the village purchased the property on a four-to-vote in February of 2009. Shortly thereafter, it's 2009, unanimously, the board unanimously entered into an agreement with Hamilton Partners, and the vision at that time was seeking a restaurant use and other retail use for that site. The national economy completely changed. As many officials in the real estate industry would tell you, there was a glacier change across this country in how products are delivered to customers. The advancement of internet purchases, online purchases, taking away from Main Street merchants who pay heavy in property taxes was creating another burden. Congress decided to exempt internet companies from paying taxes. That was a decision, was made. You can support it or not support it. The National League of Mayors, National League of Cities have been on record since that decision in opposition in supporting Main Street businesses. That's the history on that. In late 2009, the village was approached by another funeral home, and they offered to rent and tie up the property for four years. The rent, first of all, was a funeral home use. It would not generate any sales tax, and the rent was not, in the opinion of the village officials at the time, in the village's best interest. We got quotes on demolition. The quotes were quite expensive to demolish the property, and there is still a belief that there was a value in the building, not just the dirt. And we were approached by a medical consortium of doctors in Orland Park who had a lot of patients from the greater Oaklawn area. They were well-respected. They were known by many members of the Board of Trustees and the mayor at the time, who all spoke very highly of them. For the record, conflict of interest, I do see one of the doctors. I never met him before, but after he came to Oaklawn, I was quite impressed with him, and a wonderful young lad who I'm pleased to say still provides service to many Oaklawnians, particularly a lot of young athletes in this community who have knee injuries, back injuries, or other problems. Great guy. The doctors decided to part ways, and they decided to be involved in two investments in Oaklawn. One, the former State Farm property on East Ninety-Fifth Street in between Kelly Nissan and Bank of America. That building was demolished, and you have a Class A medical building. Some of the investors were from the University of Chicago and other prominent officials, very fine folks to work with, the owners. And that property has since been sold, quite a successful investment. And you have Advocate Christ as a tenant, and you have Midwest Orthopedic as a tenant. The other physician and his colleagues chose to acquire the former Napleton Honda site across from Little Company Mary, another fine investment in this community. And I want to say in all this case, because we talk about taxes and property taxes and sales taxes, these are employers. These are employers of men and women who go to school, and with today's sophistication and medical equipment, have incredible educations, are compensated well for the skills they have in nursing, in imaging, et cetera. We're blessed to have some of that investment in the community, and I thank Advocate, and I thank all the doctors who have chosen to affiliate with that institution and make investments in our community. Why am I sharing this all with you? They paid rent twice what the rent a funeral home would have paid to the village for two years, extended it for another year, and to the tune of our finance directors, much more accurate than I am, but well over $270,000. I tend to be on the conservative side. It was more, and that was paid to the Village of Oaklawn. It was a triple-net lease, which means that they paid for the upkeep of the building, they paid for the heat, the air conditioning, the electricity, the water, et cetera. It was always envisioned to be an incubator building. It was never the intent to do anything other than to develop this building like Phase One in Stony Creek. But none of us at that time, given the economy, ever envisioned that we would be successful to bring the likes of Amariano's. Now, everybody forgets what was there before, except a few of us. Historically, institutionally, I have many memories and many visits to the site. I didn't feed any pigeons or seagulls, but I've been to that parking lot many, many times. I've also brought a lot of good people to this community with our team and with our trustees in an effort to market this property and do it successfully. But none other than the men standing up there have the expertise and kept with the village through this period of time, well over six years, to get what we have in this community, and I thank them from the bottom of my heart. And including over 400 jobs. Today, I'm on the phone with Amariano's, and guess what? They trained... They trained and employed through Tim Desmond's youth program and apprenticeship program. Not only did they employ Oaklawnians, they trained them in the Edgar Funeral Home. And guess who's going to be trained there now in the days ahead? Employees for the Evergreen Park Store. And I'm proud to do that, because we have a fine mayor in Evergreen Park and also one of our fine 911 customers, a gentleman who I spoke to on the phone. He was 100% behind Oaklawn and making the change that we made, as difficult as it was, successful. Jim Sexton does a wonderful job. He's a great neighbor here, and I'm proud to be able to help train in our community men and women who will be working in that store. That's a great success story. They also utilize our parking lot until hopefully the board tonight decides to move forward with Hamilton and take the building from its upper pictures to the lower picture. That really doesn't do it justice, folks, but the architecture, the landscaping, the upkeep. Excuse me, sir, if I could finish, thank you very much. And also bring life to that location and bring additional employees. Oscar? I betcha number one, bullet number two, they believe they will add value. I don't think there's any question about that, but I'll let the board entertain any question you like. I know Paul and Todd will be happy to address it, and they do recognize that value. We will convert that to a multi-tenant building. Design will be consistent with Stony Creek Promenade Phase One and Phase Two, which is in the marketing stage right now. Improve the existing parking lot. You really got to walk the parking lot. You got to take a look. This parking lot, again, the building was built 1969, and virtually there's no upkeep other than seal coating and not really addressing it properly from a drainage perspective, settling perspective, and future design elements to maintain that parking lot in the caliber needs to be done. Also, access, access to the Promenade, cross easements, the light, all important to make this shopping center an attractive and highly successful shopping center. Oscar? So, tonight, we're looking for approval of the master terms, and upon that, they will go out and seek pre-leasing. Feel free to ask any questions of Todd and also Paul, who've worked hard on this on the pre-leasing. They will engage an architect. So far, I think their architect, particularly not only their building architect, but their landscape architect, gives five stars from my perspective. Take a look at the caliber of trees, the plantings, the vegetation, and much more to come. It speaks of a quality landscape architect with a reputation well-known in the greater Chicago area, whether I'm in Naperville or if I'm in Barrington. Next one. They estimate they will take that asset that the village invested in and took a risk, thanks to the courage of the then-mayor and board to move this community forward, not without controversy, understandable when you take a chance like that, but they stuck with it. They're going to add another roughly $1,387,000. Oscar? They get a return, right there, transparency. There it is, folks. That's what the return is. You can take a look at that. If you talk to any other investor, which Oaklawn does in the greater Chicago area, probably the top five doing work, whether they're building New City at Clyburn and Halsted, or whether they're building Fountain Square in Lombard, or whether they're working in Orland Park, we've spoken to all of those. Or if they're in our neighboring community, Evergreen, working on a very, very difficult but important project in Evergreen Park at the southwest corner of 95th and Western, this is what they're going to tell you. Next. Cash flow, after they get to nine, 50/50. And that's a splitting. When it's all said and done, the village will recoup its investment four to six years. I'll be conservative, and thereafter, all new property tax. There are no property taxes on this building right now. They were very low to begin with. The village got approximately $8,000 a year on this site. $8,000 was the village monies that came to us. When this is all said and done, and this is included in the TIF, all the property taxes and all the sales tax will continue on through the life of a TIF period, 23 years, and when it's closed down, after that point, all the new property taxes get distributed to all the taxing bodies that we all pay our taxes to, and all the sales tax goes to the Village of Oaklawn. If it's a restaurant, it's 1.75%, and if it's other sorts of retail goods, it's at the 1%. But most likely, there'll be some eateries and perhaps some other professional offices and/or shops that complement what is trying to be done in Stony Creek.
Larry?
I'm done, Mayor.
Real quick.
Okay, Matt, you have the floor.
Yeah, after Hamilton-
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Matt Welch, special counsel to the Village of Oaklawn.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, after Hamilton receives its 9% return on equity, the village gets an equal share, and then it's split 50/50. So, it's 126 to Hamilton, 126 to the village, and then everything thereafter is split 50/50.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Okay, Carol, I think you had a question?
Actually, not questions, but I just had a comment on this whole thing.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay. I spent a lot of time on this, and I talked to Paul, talked to Brian, and talked to Matt at length about this. And, you know, after understanding exactly what this lease is all about, I under, you know, I do think it's a fair lease, that that wasn't my issue. You know, maybe it's because I own my own business. I'm more of a risk taker, and my thought was, and I shared this with all of them, you know, why? You know, obviously, we want to get the biggest bang for our buck, so why don't we just invest the 1.4 million and then hire Hamilton to just be the developer on it? And, you know, so, the way that I looked at it is, okay, so, and for the most part, I think we all pretty much agree, are very hopeful that this property will be turned around and sold within a year. And, you know, just based on what happened with Phase One, you know, once we got the lease agreement signed. But, so, based on some of these assumptions, you know, we look at, okay, if we were to sell the property for 3.5 million, and then the investment of 1.4 is taken away, then the village's portion of that at 1.4, so you're left with about $700,000. And again, these are very rough numbers, but just to give you an idea where my thought process was. So, $700,000 is left over that, according to the lease agreement, then would be split. So, then, if you look at that, so then, Hamilton would get 350, and we would get 350. So, obviously, that doesn't cover all of our costs of having purchased this property. And so, I thought, well, if we purchase it, what, you know, what would that entail? So, or if we kept the, you know, didn't sign the lease agreement, and we kind of took this all over, we would still have to hire Hamilton to be the developer. And so, you're looking at maybe 115, 120,000, you know, to hire you to do it. But then, the village is responsible for hiring the architect, you know, getting the, you know, this all to go out to bid, and as we all know, everything takes forever with the village and these kinds of a process. I think, you know, when you look at the differences, so, we're losing, okay, so you're basically making, and again, this is real rough, but once this property is sold, which is what we all want, because nobody, the village doesn't want to be in the business of owning real estate. So, bottom line is, you're going to make roughly about $350,000 on this, on this deal. And so, if we still, if we were to invest the 1.4 million and have to hire you to be the developer, so you're really only looking at a difference of roughly about $230,000, And part of that is the risk then associated. You know, so now, we have the risk of taking out a loan for a million four, and then if there's any delays in the build-out, you know, which there would be, I think that this would roll along a lot quicker. And if there are delays, then, you know, we don't have leasing tenants, we're paying tenants, we don't have, you know, property tax coming in. There's just a lot of moving parts on this that honestly just kind of worried me. And so, bottom line is, is that if it was my personal investment, I probably would give them a million four. But the fact is that I'm responsible, in my opinion. You know, this is taxpayer money that we're talking about, and there is a lot of risk associated with if we were to go out and get the million four and kind of run this project, and, you know, sometimes, given the flavor of the board, we don't agree on everything, and that could just make this whole situation a heck of a lot worse. And again, that concerns me. And so, I think that we need to be more conservative. I do think it's fair. Would I want a bigger chunk? You betcha, I do. I would love to say, let's go for it. But there's just too many moving parts, and I don't think that I can risk the taxpayers' money on that. And the fact is, while some of these figures on the Grun report, you know, they were redone today after, you know, I questioned the sales tax dollars and the property tax money coming back to us changed. But the bottom line is, as Larry said, we will get our money back and start seeing, you know, profit, if you will, within five years. And so, because of that, I am going to approve for this.
Okay.
This lease.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Trustee Strite?
When this came before the board originally, which was just a month or so ago, I said that that was a bad deal for taxpayers, and it was. It was an 80/20 split, 80% going to Hamilton, 20% to the village on the leases, and they've come back admittedly with a better deal. I will acknowledge that. But I also asked if there was a request for proposals, if we had gone out and asked for proposals from any other developers. And we've had a lot of time, and just to eliminate the appearance that this is just another insider sweetheart deal, shouldn't we have brought competition into it and gotten other proposals from other developers? And we didn't, and for that reason, I oppose this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call the vote.
Can I just one quick comment?
Sure.
I just want to address the fact, you know, as far as that, Hamilton, you know, seven, eight years, I've been, I've met with developers when we first started this whole vision, and I met with a lot of developers. And I can say that, you know, we have the top guys here. And this Edgar property, they, even knowing that there's a possibility they may not even be involved in this, you know, Paul has been working on trying to find tenants. And I do believe that they are trying their best, trying to get the best for Oaklawn and making it look nice. And so, that's why I was okay. It only makes sense to keep them in here. And while I completely understand where you're coming from, Trustee Strite, on the bidding process, you know, in this circumstance, we're moving forward, they've already done work on this. The last thing I want is to have a developer, a low bidder, come in, and it's schlocky, and they don't give a crap, you know, what businesses come in there, or what it looks like. And to me, I know what I'm getting. I know they're going to do the best for us, and that's where my faith in this process, you know, is. So, I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Trustee Desmond?
Yeah, just, let's know what they're saying. So, I think we're all agreed that we're happy with Hamilton. We're all agreed that it's good for the taxpayers.
Not all, not all, but the majority.
We still have one opposed, and we're all agreed.
Thank you.
Doesn't make any sense.
And, you know, I continue to hear nothing but positive, positive things from residents. People are just ecstatic with how it's going, and the excitement is building on the new stuff coming in, and we can hardly wait to see Cooper's Hawk get going. It's going to get vertical soon, and thank you so much. Oaklawn is truly fired up about this one, so thank you. Okay, with that, let's take the vote.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
No.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar.
Okay, so, item 12 is a resolution number 142956. This is a resolution authorizing the execution of a release and settlement agreement. I need a motion, please, on item 12.
I'll make the motion.
Properly moved by Trustee Vorderer.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Quinlan. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. 13 on our agenda tonight is a request to waive the formal bidding process and grant permission to Order 1, 2015, Chevy Tahoe from Webb Chevrolet in the amount of $35,276. This is a 2014 budget item also. May I have a motion on item 13, please?
I do have a question. Is this a lease or purchase?
It's a lease.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you making a motion, then?
Yeah, motion approved.
Okay, properly moved by Trustee Olenichik. Seconded by Trustee Quinlan. Any discussion? Please take the vote on this leased item.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 14 is our village clerk's report. Jane, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Disbursement Resolution Number 2014-20D, approval of semi-monthly dispersment dated October 28, 2014, in the amount of $1,919,286.48.
May I have a motion, please, on item 24A?
Motion approved.
Properly moved by Trustee Carberry.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Quinlan. Any discussion? Please take the vote.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Strite?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Carberry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Couple more things, Mayor.
Sure.
At the village hall right now, we have early voting and grace period voter registration. We have to commend David Orr and his staff because they've done everything possible to get the voters out and vote. And if you have not voted yet, we have early voting going on October 29 through this Friday, October 31, right here in this room, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This Saturday, November 1, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, November 2, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on Monday and Tuesday, grace period registration and voting. Monday, November 3, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Tuesday, on Election Day, right in this very room, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, like I said, David Orr and his staff should be commended, and we have a wonderful county group here that does really take care of the voting. And one last thing, I'd like to thank Mother McCauley High School for the all-school reunion they held last Saturday night. It was great to see everybody, a lot of Oaklawn residents, and it was a beautiful evening. Thank you, Mother McCauley. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Item 20, excuse me, 15, I'm so used to 25, it's only 15. Item 15 is village president's report, general village matters. I just want to reiterate how important voting is. Thank you for talking about it. I was talking recently with a veteran who had served several tours overseas, and this veteran had helped the Afghanistan people vote, they had helped the Iraqi people vote. This veteran came back and was so disgusted to see only 15% or so of residents vote. Please get out the vote. It doesn't matter who you support, our voice has to be heard. So, please take advantage of the early voting and get out on Election Day. I want to congratulate resident Mary Koss for being named Senior of the Year by Congressman Lipinski last week. The senior center has a small group of women, and I believe one man, I think, has come, where they collect scraps of fabrics, make comfort items for those in the hospital and the children's hospital, chemo scarves, lap blankets, all kinds of slippers and wonderful things. It's great to see someone recognized for doing something wonderful. And with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Someone will-
Properly moved by Trustee Olenichik, seconded by- Properly moved by trustee Olenichik, seconded by trustee Carberry. Any discussion? Take the vote.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.